Welcome to our Perfect Attendance Reception. Tonight is the opening of our Cultural Arts Season here at the Central Office. You may know that we have new artwork and new entertainment each and every month. Tonight, we have on the walls artwork from Fountain Blue Junior High School students. Their teacher is Ms. Adair Watkins. Our entertainment tonight for our perfect attendees is from Madisonville Junior High Ensemble. Their choir director is Ms. Rebecca McLean, Ms. McLean, and we have a student teacher, Ms. Mary Peacock, who has been assisting her. We'd like to also thank Principal Dwayne Kern for coming here for his support. And I will give them the name, tell you the names of the two songs, and then I will turn it over to the young ladies. The first song is "A Song of Peace," appropriate for our September 11th program. And even more appropriately, the second song, Perfect Attendance Night, is named "I Was Here." Please welcome Madisonville Junior High Choir.
Good evening. Let's give Madisonville Junior High, under the direction of Ms. Becky McLean, one more round of applause. Great job.[584.29][584.29](Applause) Now, I know we have a lot of people outside, and if there's anybody outside that has not completed their $500 drawing card, and that is only the people that have perfect attendance. So, Mr. Javia, you may not go fill out one of those cards, okay? I'm Brandon Clanton, Supervisor in the Human Resources Office, and it is truly my pleasure to welcome you all here for our reception tonight. We're going to have a big drawing in a little while, and I want to thank our Superintendent, Mr. W.L. Trefoles III, for continuing this and recognizing our employees for perfect attendance during this school year. I also want to recognize our two Assistant Superintendents, Mr. Pete Javia and Ms. Cheryl And I'd like to take a minute to introduce our board members. Our Board President, Ms. Beth Heinz.[648.66][648.66](Applause) I'm not sure if I've seen Mr. Womack, our Board Vice President, Mr. Bob Womack.[656.44][656.44](Applause) Mr. Michael Durman, right over here. Mr. Jack Lou, right over here. Mr. Charles Harold, right over here on the side.[673.01][673.01](Applause) Ms. Robin Mullitt.[676.63][676.63](Applause) Mr. Neil Henigan.[682.01][682.01](Applause) Mr. Willie Jeter, right over here.[686.73][686.73](Applause) Ms. Rowan Tipton.[691.01][691.01](Applause) Mr. Ron Dettencourt.[695.73][695.73](Applause) Ronnie Pancks.[700.01][700.01](Applause) Mr. John Lamarck.[704.87][704.87](Applause) Ms. Peggy Sealy, right up front.[709.73][709.73](Applause) Mr. Ray Alfred.[713.73][713.73](Applause) Ms. Mary Kay Bellisario.[718.87][718.87](Applause) You know, perfect attendance is quite an accomplishment. It shows a tremendous dedication to come every single day, rain, shine, or whether you're feeling well with your dedication, whether you're a bus driver, a classroom teacher, a support person. It shows a great dedication to the St. Tammany Parish Public School System. It shows a great dedication to the students in our parish, and it's people like you that are here tonight that truly set our parish apart from other areas in the state. So, if there's, is there anybody outside in the hallway, if y'all would please walk in, if you have perfect attendance? And would everybody with perfect attendance please stand up and be recognized for that Our partner tonight in this is Health Management Partners and Ms. Lisa Newman. Lisa wants to make sure that each of you know how proud of you she is. They're our Employee Assistance Program, and she takes great pride in sponsoring the gift card for tonight. She's a parent, she's a wife of a teacher, and she personally wants through me to convey her thanks for your dedication and support. Now, we're going to do a $500 award card, but before we do that, where's Ms. Tipton? Is Ms. Rowan Tipton here? Okay, I'm going to ask Ms. Beth Heinz to come forward, please, our Board President, and she will read this Perfect Attendance Resolution. This resolution will again be read into the minutes of our board meeting, and then you will all be sent a copy. Thank you.
I'd like to offer this resolution tonight. Whereas the strength of the St. Tammany Parish School System is determined in large part by the dedication and hard work of the employees of the system, and whereas exemplary employee attendance is one factor in the foundation of a strong employee workforce, and whereas accountability goes beyond test scores to include a positive work ethic that supports strong academic performance, and whereas employee attendance can be directly linked to student achievement and a positive learning climate, and whereas perfect attendance by employees of the school system shows a high degree of commitment to maximizing instructional time and limiting disruptions to learning, and whereas perfect attendance by employees also serves as an example for students that can encourage improved student attendance and positive work habits that will serve students well through life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the St. Tammany Parish School Board acknowledge and appreciate the commitment of all employees within the school system who have perfect attendance on the job and commend them for their outstanding diligence and dedication. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the board with a copy being sent to all employees having perfect attendance during the 2013-14 school year. Thank you very much.[924.87][924.87](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Mr. Foles, if I could ask you to come forward and pick out the winning card.[935.73][935.73](Crowd)
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.[968.23][968.23](Crowd)
Thank you.[972.23][972.23](Applause)
Thank you.[976.23][976.23](Applause) Now, everybody that didn't win, you have to get perfect attendance so you can have another chance next year. So, I hope to see all of y'all back next year. I certainly want to thank you again, as on behalf of the system, we certainly appreciate your dedication. You do not have to stay for the board meeting, but you certainly are welcome to, and I certainly hope that you'll join us for some punch and some cookies, and I think we have a little coffee over here. Thank you all very much. This concludes our program for tonight.[1006.62][1006.62](Applause)
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Renoff, did you call the roll for it?
Here.
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mr. Durman.
Here.
Mr. Lou.
Here.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Ms. Tipton.
Here.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Ms. Sealy.
Here.
Ms. Mallis.
Present.
Mr. Dettencourt.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mr. Pancks.
Here.
Ms. Lamarck.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Ms. Bellisario.
Thank you very much, and welcome to our September 11th, 2014 meeting. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Alfred to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless us tonight. We also say thank you for all that you've done to St. Tammany Parish, and also give the teachers a special hug for us because they do so much for our kids. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is recognition of visitors. Is there any board member who would like to recognize anyone in our audience this evening? Ms. Sealy?
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. At this time, I would like to welcome, from St. Tammany District Parent Teacher Association, our board member Shane Hodgson, who was our webmaster and social media person also, and my husband Joseph Sealy, who is District PTA Secretary. Thank you for coming and representing us.[1151.33][1151.33](Applause)
Anyone else? Then we'll move on to our next item, which is special recognitions. The first one is perfect attendance recognition. Mr. Clanton.
Good evening. I hope everybody had an opportunity to attend our Perfect Attendance Reception and Grand Prize Drawing earlier this afternoon to celebrate the employees who had perfect attendance during the 2013-14 school year. Certainly want to thank Mr. Foles again for this recognition. I also want to thank Lisa Newman with Health Management Partners, our Employee Assistance Program, who has again donated the $500 grand prize. I know that we all hope that these employees serve as role models, and that we will have many more employees with perfect attendance during the 2014-2015 school year. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Rowan Tipton to read a resolution into the minutes commending these employees, and a copy of that resolution will be sent to these employees. Ms. Tipton?
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Whereas the strength of the St. Tammany Parish Public School System is determined in large part by the dedication and hard work of the employees of the system, and whereas exemplary employee attendance is one factor in the foundation of a strong employee workforce, and whereas accountability goes beyond test scores to include a positive work ethic that supports strong academic performance, and whereas employee attendance can be directly linked to student achievement and a positive learning climate, and whereas perfect attendance by employees of the school system shows a high degree of commitment to maximizing instructional time and limiting disruptions to learning, and whereas perfect attendance by employees also serves as an example for students that can encourage improved student attendance and positive work habits that will serve students well through life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the St. Tammany Parish School Board acknowledge and appreciate the commitment of all employees within the school system who have perfect attendance on the job and commend them for their outstanding diligence and dedication. Be it further resolved that the, this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this board with a copy being sent to all employees having perfect attendance during the, during the 2013-2014 school year. And I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Tipton. We have, is that a unanimous second? A unanimous second from the board? Do we have any comments from the board? Comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. So ordered. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clanton. That brings us to item number two, which is National PTA School of Excellence Awards. We have Ms. Peggy Sharp, our Supervisor of Fine Arts, to speak.
Thank you. The National PTA has announced that 170 schools across the nation have been honored with the distinction of National PTA School of Excellence for their achievements in building strong family-school partnerships. Research has shown that when families and schools work together, student achievement increases, schools improve, and communities grow. It gives me great pride tonight to be able to announce that two of our St. Tammany schools, two of the 170, have received the outstanding recognition of being 2014 National PTA Schools of Excellence. While we have enthusiastic, hard-working PTA units at all of our schools, the two units that were selected by the National PTA to be honored tonight are Mandeville Elementary and Maraney Elementary.[1393.13][1393.13](Applause) Would the representatives from Mandeville Elementary please come to the front, as Mr. Superintendent Foles will present you with your certificate? We have representing Mandeville Elementary tonight, Principal Chantel Smith, and PTA Co-President Noel Wager. And we're so glad you can make it. And now, with those representing Maraney Elementary, please join Superintendent Foles. For Maraney Elementary, we have Principal Leslie Martin, past President Julie Fauchet, Thank you all for your dedication to the work of the PTA and to the students of St. Tammany Public Schools. And this time of year, we always like to remind everyone how important it is to please join the PTA. If anyone needs a membership card, they can see me after the meeting. Thank you.[1488.32][1488.32](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Sharp, and a special congratulations from board members to those two outstanding PTA units in St. Tammany. The next item is United Way Campaign. We have a presentation this evening from Ms. Kami Proctor, who's the Resource Development Associate, United Way of St. Tammany Parish. Welcome.
Hi. Well, thank you so much for letting me come and speak for just a second. On July 28th, we had the annual Red Beans and Rice Kickoff, and you guys so graciously let us use the, the room back here in the cafeteria area, and so that was such a great benefit to us, and we appreciate that so much. And so we have a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Foles and the school board. And then also, not only that, you guys are the number-one campaign in St. Tammany Parish. That is an awesome feat.[1548.82][1548.82](Applause) In 2013, $153,000 was collected by the St. Tammany Parish School System, and with that money, we were able to do so much. We're able to fund 20 different programs and over 30 different agencies. So, we thank you, we appreciate you and everything that you do, and not only are you the number-one in St. Tammany Parish, you're the number 12 in the seven parishes that we service.[1581.73][1581.73](Applause) So, thank you so very much.[1587.82][1587.82](Applause)
On behalf of our school system, just want to continue to thank United Way for their partnership. You know, last week, earlier this week, we had our kickoff banquet, and we had all of our administrators from each school, so we're looking forward to a really good campaign. Kevin DeRousse and Peggy Sharp are heading up our campaign this year. We finally got rid of Mr. Brady, and we're going to go it on our own this year, so we're excited about that, and we know that we'll do a good job, and I know Bill will be pulling for us along the way. So, we're looking forward to the year and bringing you a really good number as the year goes on. Thank you. And I think Ms. Bellisario has a resolution to read.
Yes, please, Ms. Bellisario.
Thank you. I'd like to present the following resolution. Whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board recognizes the contributions made by the United Way to services in St. Tammany Parish through agencies such as the American Red Cross, the Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA, YWCA, St. Tammany Association of Retarded Citizens, East St. Tammany Rainbow Child Care Center, Girl Scout Council, Boy Scouts of America, and Youth Services Bureau, and whereas this board would like to encourage all employees to participate in the 2014 drive through payroll deduction or cash contributions during the campaign scheduled from September 9th, 2014 to October 10th, 2014. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Tammany Parish School Board does hereby go on record as supporting the United Way drive in the St. Tammany Parish School System. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the board with a copy being sent to all schools and sites to encourage participation in reaching the United Way goal for this year, and I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Bellisario. We have a unanimous second by the board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. So ordered. That brings us to our public comment section of the meeting this evening. We have a number of people who've signed up to speak. We'll ask that, I'll call your name first, but when you come to the mic, would you please give your name for the record, and then you'll be allowed to speak? The first speaker is Jenny Klein.
My name is Jenny Klein, and as we remember what happened 13 years ago in this country today, I feel we are now under a different type of threat from our own State Department of Education. I'm concerned about how this state is interpreting the new privacy law. I mean, I'm happy to sign consent forms for my children to appear in the paper, in clubs, or anything else that they need to do. I think the state is trying to scare the parishes because they want student-level data to send to anyone, and this law is hindering their agenda. I just read Dr. Schneider's latest post, which states that the federally-funded Park Consortium has agreed to deliver student-level data to the USDOE. Appendix F in the Race to the Top application says the state will work with the department... Appendix F in the Race to the Top application says the state will work with the department to develop a strategy to make student-level data that result from the assessment system available on an ongoing basis. Why do the states and feds need student-level information? Is it to flood their longitudinal databases? Will the park tests that our state is pushing for now be against the law? And that is why they are trying to undo the privacy law. I believe we have the strongest privacy law in the nation, and I don't want Bessie, John White, and others with a financial interest and agenda to undo anything. My children's personal information should not be for sale, nor should the USDOE need it or the state provide it. Another alarming event is that some of our reps are advocating for places like the DMV to have access to all of our records, including medical. So when we renew our driver's license, the DMV can tell us that our children need shots. This is not okay. Why is our state advocating for profiling our children on what they might do, what laws they might break? Where's all this information going? I just don't understand that any of our lawmakers would be okay with all this data collection, but they are. Just take a look at Chris Broadwater in Tangi Ho Parish. We don't need our privacy law weakened, only strengthened. We cannot allow the state and feds to continue to collect all this personal information on our children. We need to stop this at the local level. And we don't need any of this fake school choice in the state or our parish. It is nothing but taxation without representation and a way for the state to destroy public and private schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. George, did you wish to have your name pulled? Thank you. Wanda Baron and Kim Tredway.
Hi.
You'll be given three minutes to gather.
Yes, we both have the same concerns. My name's Kim Tredway. I have a seventh grader in your schools.
And I'm Wanda Baron. I have a seventh grader and an eighth grader. A friend of mine recently Googled one of my son's seventh-grade math word problem because I was at a total loss on how to help him, and it brought her directly to the Engage New York website. So after doing some research, we realized that his whole workbook that they are working from is the Engage New York curriculum, word for word, page for page, mistakes and all. I also checked my eighth grader's workbook, same result. The deceiving part is that her workbook cover, which is unattached to the workbook, is titled "Eighth Grade Math" with the St. Tammany Parish Public Schools emblem on it, which would lead me to believe it was developed by St. Tammany Parish. I watched your newscast, Mr. Foles, on August 5th, and you specifically said that St. Tammany Parish will be using the guaranteed curriculum. We have confirmed that the third, fifth, seventh, and eighth graders are using Engage New York, so I'm sure it is all grades across the board. So can you please clear this up for us? We have heard from several students and teachers how this work makes no sense. My son, who is in gifted, is now stressed and hating math and feels very rushed because they are on a timeline to finish units by a certain date. He's always been very strong in math and loved it till this year. Also, why are the seventh graders' regular ed honors and gifted classes doing the same work? Teachers are stressed because they don't know how to really teach it. As parents, we cannot even help our children because we don't understand it ourselves. There are no explanations or examples in the workbook to even learn from. Why in the world do we use a curriculum where last year nearly 70% of elementary and middle school students in New York did not meet the state's new academic standards? It is very upsetting that our state would go this route with our education and that parents were not told the truth. It is setting our kids up for failure, plain and simple. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Donna A. Bear.
Hello, I'm Donna A. Bear. You all should each have a handout that I printed for you all, and when you can, you can take the time, not tonight, or maybe tomorrow, look through it. I'd like you to see, that's my second grader's kind of classwork, homework from Madisonville Elementary. And in regards to that, I just wanted to, you know, let you all know about the handouts, and please forgive me because this is really coming from the heart. I don't really have a speech written, so I'm just going to kind of flow with this, so please, everybody bear with me. I moved to St. Tammany for a reason. I wasn't even, I didn't even have a child before I moved over here. But I picked St. Tammany because this is where I wanted to live, because it had such a great, great school district. Otherwise, I could have moved to North Carolina, where my work is. But I wanted to stay here by my family and have that family atmosphere. But the way that this school system is going now, kids are being pulled out, they're going to homeschool, people are going to private schools. I don't want that. I pay tax dollars, and I want my child to be able to learn at Madisonville Elementary and the rest of Madisonville schools in this district. The other thing is that, in regards to the whole Common Core, Eureka, Engage, Math, whatever, I'm not for it. I'll let you know that right now. And the stress that it's creating on my child and having her come home and frustrated and saying she hates herself, she hates school, tonight, she was crying, I was crying. And to think that I have to down a bottle of wine before I have to do homework is pathetic, and I'm not the only parent who says it, and the only parent who wants to stab herself in the eyeballs with pencils because of the fact of what you're about to face with this Common Core stuff. What happened to phonics? What happened to teaching kids how to read? My daughter can't even read some of the math problems that's in this crazy stuff. The other thing is, is what happened to math facts? What happened to teaching these two-year, I mean, seven-year-olds basic math? How to add? If you, you'll see in some of those, one of them said, "How many centimeters are in a meter?" I guarantee you, a lot of people in this room have to Google it, because not everybody knows it. So how do you expect a seven-year-old to know it? So there I stand on the math and the Common Core and that. And I think even at the open house, her teacher even said, "Some of the math in there was not even age-appropriate for her." None of them. And I think all of you all need to take a good, hard look at it, and maybe come to my house for a Common Core project at 4:30 and do homework with me Monday through Thursday and see what we go through. The other thing is, you know, talked about my child's frustration. You're breaking down these kids' self-esteem. Their self-esteem's are low. And you know what happens with self-esteem down the road? Because it's hard to fix, you're going to have suicide, drug problems, teenage pregnancy. And I don't want anybody to say that it's not their problem, because it will be your problem in the future. So that's another part of the frustration of it and low self-esteem. The other thing, textbooks. I know people are complaining about textbooks, but I don't want that crap in the textbooks. We need to fix it. And I'm sorry for my language. I was going to say, you all are elected for a reason, and bring St. Tammany back to what it was, please.
Hello, I actually prepared a speech. My last name is actually Yusei. My children are Marquez. I still go by my maiden name, so my name is Stephanie Yusei. I have four children in the St. Tammany Public School System. I have a second grader, a third grader, a fifth grader, and a seventh grader. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Eureka Math or Engage New York curriculum we are using here. First, why would we use a curriculum that has been proven to fail in the state of New York, as someone else just mentioned? 74% of the students in New York failed their standardized tests, so why are we using it? Coming from a different standpoint of having a child who is failing, I only have one that isn't doing well, my second grader, who is bringing home Ds and Fs, while the other three have As. But with that being said, my second grader is not even close to being proficient in addition or subtraction, but is being required to solve algebraic equations and three, four, or even five-step word problems. My third grader is being taught multiplication without actually learning to multiply, yet has an A in math. My fifth grader, who because of the implementation of Common Core, completely skipped over multiplication, yet is required in the fifth-grade math curriculum. Her teachers tested the students in their multiplication proficiency, and my daughter only scored 36%. She said she's one of the highest in the class. That's right, fifth graders cannot multiply. Oh, and she has an A in math. Now, my seventh grader, who received a wonderful foundation in math before Common Core, is now stuck, being dumbed down, as they say it, repeating the same fractions and decimal calculations he learned back in fifth grade. I sit and wonder why you think it's appropriate for my second grader to work algebraic problems, but not my seventh grader. I will finish with a problem from my third grader's homework last night. I didn't have time to make copies, but I'm pretty sure you guys can go on Engage New York and find it. Very simple problem, six times three. Then there's another problem below it, four times three is 12. The only way she can answer it is by counting circles. Then there's two times three is six. She has to count the six circles. And then they have four times three plus two times three equals 12 plus six. Then six times three equals 12 plus six, and eventually, six times three is 18. Two hours after we did homework last night, I looked at her and I said, "Emily, what's six times three?" And she shrugged her shoulders and said, "I have no idea." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharie Catton. I have two children in the St. Tammany Parish School System. I have one at home with me. My children are in first and second grade at Madisonville Elementary, so you can add second grade to your list of straight Engage New York. I really feel like parents are being deceived and lied to, and y'all are hiding behind the guaranteed curriculum. I'd like to know why the words "Engage New York" are removed from every worksheet that comes home. It would almost be easier if you would leave the numbers that go along with the Engage New York worksheets on the paper so that we can at least figure out how to do the homework and have examples with correct answers, because they have no textbooks. The frustration is unbelievable. I mean, seriously. This is, this is, this went home last night, second grade, our guaranteed curriculum. Cooper's Tower is 35 centimeters tall. Peyton's Tower is three centimeter shorter than Jessie's Doll. What is the total height of both towers? I only see one tower. I mean, this is what we're giving second graders to read, and of course, there's a few steps that you have to do after it, because you can't just have an answer. I also spoke with my child's teacher right before coming, and I know there was a meeting with the principal and Ms. Araby, and my teacher has no problem coming forward and talking to you, Mr. Foles. As a matter of fact, she would like to see you extend an invitation to every teacher in St. Tammany. Because she said this is the first time ever that they have been asked their opinion. Their critique of this curriculum is unbelievable. They truly think that whoever wrote this has never spent a minute in a second-grade classroom. You could, it, there's no sequence. Everything just jumps around. There's no flow whatsoever. And I just, I mean, unless this changes, I don't see us keeping our kids in this school system. And I know we're not the only ones. So I am begging you to please get teacher input. We're stuck with this. I guess let's make the best out of it. I don't know why we can't use the same resources of old and new. And she did reiterate the same thing, my teacher did. They are handed this curriculum, copies of a curriculum. They have to teach it to the minute, and therefore, they have no time to teach fun math and teach it the way the students, they know the students will learn it. So that's all I ask, is that you please get teacher input. Thank you.
Wendy Sabatier.
My name is Wendy Sabache, and I've made my concerns known to Mr. Foles, Ms. Araby, by school board members, as well as many other school board members. I feel as a mother of children who are struggling that it's my responsibility to voice my concerns here in a public forum as well. I have a seventh, fifth, and second grader currently in the St. Tammany Parish schools and two more entering next year. Last year was our first year in the public school system, and because of Common Core, it was not a good experience. I fought it the best way I could as a full-time working mother of five, because I saw how it was affecting my children and other children as well. I couldn't imagine that it could get any worse than last year, but this year, it's been far worse, and we're just getting started. We have no examples to help the children with math and parents with this Eureka slash Engage New York math. Since parents don't know how to do it, the Common Core way, we're told to pull up links to websites teaching us how to do it, these new methods. Imagine the frustration of children and parents coming home from school and work trying to relearn math for their child or multiple children, like it is in my home. Or what about these families or children who have no computer at home? Are they just at a loss? How are the parents learning how to do it for them? Also, the Eureka Math slash Engage New York sheets that come home have been given out to the schools by the St. Tammany Parish Central Office, and within the first week, we had multiple errors, grammatical and number placement errors. So as if it wasn't already confusing enough, the errors were making it much worse. Who pre-freeze these manuals before it's given out to the schools? Counselors in our area have reached out to a lot of the parents, to me as well, and they didn't know a lot about Common Core last year, but this year they do. So the following is some information from them. They're concerned about the amount of crying and frustration of children, especially the ones pulling at their hair and faces in class. The frustration and crying in class is more prominent. Kids are so overwhelmed that they're not able to control their emotions. Parents not being able to help them, or even teacher frustration contributes to the tone. Kids are pushed into developmentally inappropriate concepts. A child's expression in the class seems to be less childlike than ever, and these kids are more like a stressed-out adult at work than a child in school. They're also seeing a lot of kids that are crying because they just want to go home. Why force these kids to do it the new way? Because of a test? That's what I've been told, because they have to pass a test. But at this point, we don't have a test at the end of the year, nor have we seen the test to actually see what kind of math is on the test. Why are we trying to put them into a box? Kids need to be told, kids are also being told that they can't do it their parents' way, or they get reprimanded in school, and that needs to stop. St. Tammany's always been a step ahead of other parishes, and they look to us as an example. We can be better than this. Thank you.
Forgive me for mispronouncing these names. Debbie Sacks.
I would like to thank this board for their swift action with respect to Act 837, that's the Privacy Act, was backed unanimously by our legislators. The horrible websites promoted by the LDOE and John White forcing innocent children to surrender personal information about themselves to government agencies and private entities are being systematically removed under the watchful eye of Louis Bouillon, the IT Director of St. Tammany Parish. Thank you, Mr. Bouillon. If there is a bright spot in all of this, for once, Louisiana is leading the nation with model legislation protecting the rights of children with respect to their privacy and safety. Unfortunately, Superintendent White has repeatedly shown no respect for our children and teachers on multiple levels. He irresponsibly shares their personal information and holds our children and teachers accountable to tests that parents and teachers cannot see. He actively prevented a law that was trying to be passed so that parents and teachers could see these tests that our children are taking, such as the leap and now park. Please use the law in the form of Act 532 and remove the unsound Eureka Engage New York math curriculum recommended by John White and the LDOA. John White wants, he would like nothing more than our children to fail. He is setting up St. Tammany Parish to be charterized under the guise of school choice. He's eliminating our locally-elected representative government in the form of local school boards, which means all of you, and he's sending our tax dollars, attempting to send our tax dollars away from our local community. This way, John White accrues and centralizes more power to himself and Bessie in Baton Rouge. This is wrong. Please stand up for yourselves, the children, teachers, and taxpayers of St. Tammany Parish by enforcing the new laws that grant you the power to do so. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Wood. Our next speaker is Sarah Wood.
Sarah Wood, Mandeville. I have four children, only one left in the public school system because I'm homeschooling my two middle school children because of what happened last year. Not only does this need to be removed, but somebody needs to be held accountable. People move to St. Tammany because of the quality of life, a quality of life that is centered around public education. You pride yourselves on being leading, on leading the parish, or being a leading parish that delivers quality public education. That quality public education is centered around the guaranteed curriculum written by our very own curriculum specialists in our very own curriculum department. But what happens when that guaranteed curriculum becomes merely a cover for a Common Core I would like to know why the administration is telling the public through the St. Tammany website and on the media that we are using the guaranteed curriculum as if it is something different than is recommended by the state. It might have been different before the Common Core, but now it really is not. The fact is that we are primarily following the teacher toolbox resources that are provided by the state, and when you look at what is publicly posted as the guaranteed curriculum on the St. Tammany School Board website, it is not a curriculum, but instead, it is a list of the pertinent Common Core standards for that grade, subject, and unit. So my question is, why are we being followers when as taxpayers, we pay a premium for quality public education in St. Tammany to be leaders? And we do not pay so much to be the leader of the followers. We pay so much to be a leader that does not follow, but that grabs the bull by the horns and blazes the trail for others to follow. Our state does not have leadership in education right now. John White is not leading the state in a good direction. And to follow it, to follow him, to follow the state, would be certain to lead St. Tammany down a path of no return. So I ask that St. Tammany step up to lead the state like we do in so many other things. And I ask that you use the period of time granted under the state's moratorium as to the consequences of accountability, to figure out a way to use our curriculum department to actually come up with a curriculum that is uniquely excellent and reflective of that which we expect of our parish. Such a curriculum needs to be one that focuses, where nobody's focusing these days, on the education of our children, and not focused instead on training them to pass standardized tests. Tests that we cannot see and have no actual idea what they test or for what reason. I'll just have a few more minutes. I want to say, as a taxpayer, that if you choose, and this is very important, because I'm just letting you know right now that I will be leading this request, I want to say that as a taxpayer, if you choose to continue to do what you started doing last year, and that is to basically follow the state in too many respects as to curriculum, then I do not see why we need to spend money on what used to be our prized curriculum department, when that money would be much more effectively used for our teachers, since they will be doing more than just rubber stamping or filtering what is coming from outside of our state and effectively rubber stamped and filtered at the state level, too. Because other than the children, they have the most to lose. I also ask that you let the public know what is actually going on with the curriculum being used and why. I ask that you provide confidential opportunities for teachers to give feedback on what is actually happening in our classrooms. And so, please, put your best people together to figure out what needs to be done in order to be a leader in education for our parish as well as our state, to educate children and not to train them for a test that we cannot see. You guys are our last hope. You're like, that's it, we have you all. We need you all to fight, not just here for what is best, but at the state level. We need each and every one of you to do what is right, to do the brave thing and say, this is wrong, and St. Tammany's not going to do it that way, and have faith that God will provide the remedy. Thank you.
You said it right. I'm impressed. My name is Amy Dutch, and I am a former early childhood educator. And it's been about one year since I stood here last, begging you to help get us out of Common Core. Since then, I've gone viral on blogs, I've been on national media, local media, and I'll tell you what, I'm tired. I am tired of having to do this fight. I am ready to get rid of the fake school choice that discriminates against my special-needs child, that is going to seep into our public schools. I'm ready to not have to constantly sue the stress of families that come to my group and my fan page asking for help, what am I supposed to do? I don't mind making it all better for them, but I can't make it all better for them. I want to have people come, I am now in my second year of homeschooling, and I want to have people come to homeschooling because they want to, not because they feel like they have to. And I would like to pay my taxes for a school system I'm proud of. And I am incredibly grateful and amazed at how many wonderful people I have met through this process. I'd rather not have met them through this process, but I am grateful that I have. And I am grateful for those that have stepped up and been in this fight. I've been an education advocate since 2000, when I started teaching at Head Start, so I'm really familiar with government crap and how it works. And I'm tired of seeing particularly early childhood and small children be manipulated into yet another testing machine. Our children are more than a test, they're more than a score, and I want teachers to be able to teach. A good teacher will teach no matter what the curriculum is, and we need to allow them the chance to do so. I want children to be able to be children and not have to cry over their homework. This breaks my heart. My children don't have to go through this, because I homeschool them, so I don't have to do this ridiculous curriculum. But we brag and brag that we have this wonderful curriculum, and apparently, it's not that great. So I'm extremely worried for the future of St. Tammany and extremely worried for these poor children, because this, I'm an advocate for children, for me to have to listen to these parents and these kids come to me, and it's not just these few in this room. I have 2,000 on my group who come to me with problems. So it's really, really time that you guys, I appreciate the resolution, but it's time to put up or shut up, and we've got to get rid of this. Thank you.
First of all, let me thank you all for being here. And I knew some of you were going to be here tonight. I put some things on paper last night I'd like to share with you as we move forward. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here, sharing your thoughts, your ideas, your suggestions, and even your frustrations. I admire your passion and appreciate your support of our school system, and believe it or not, I share some of your same very frustrations. I really believe as traditional public school systems, we have been put in the middle of a battle between our governor and our state superintendent of education with a flawed implementation process that started two years ago, one month before schools started. That sudden change of plans has created many challenges along the way. We continue to be told that we have local option, but we all know that our local option curriculum is strongly influenced by Common Core state standards and the same standard measured by PARC testing. Just last night, as I was writing this, I got an email from the Department of Ed Network team that is assigned to our school system. It said, and I quote, "To reiterate to all stakeholders that the state is not deviating from its long-term plan. Moving forward, the plan's focus will remain the same. Twenty-fourteen, fifteen grades, three through eight ELA and math assessments will measure student achievement using questions developed through the PARC process." End of quote. With that said, I know we must move forward, and we must do what we can to put our students in the best possible position to succeed. And I can tell you that this position looks different to almost each and every person here tonight. If we want Common Core state standards and PARC testing to change, it can happen here, but it certainly can happen in Baton Rouge. I must tell you that there are very strong and passionate feelings on both sides of this issue across the parish, the state, and the nation. As many of you have heard me say before, we are blessed to live in a community that values public education. Our standards and expectations have always been high, and our community is extremely proud of this system's A-letter grade and our nationally-ranked ACT scores. We cannot let them down. You've also heard me say many times that we must never allow our school system to be strictly identified by a letter grade or a test score. If we do that, we sure do not have the meaning of a true public school system. I'm proud of our efforts, and I know each and every one of our employees have given their very best. With this fast-paced implementation, have we made mistakes along the way? Quite definitely. And hearing from some of you tonight, there are more things that I promise you that I will look into starting tomorrow morning. But with so much on the line, including district performance scores, school performance scores, teacher accountability scores, teachers' salaries, teachers' tenured, and I mentioned earlier, a flawed implementation process, I can see how some of these things happen. Was it intentional, or for a lack of effort or caring? Absolutely not. Can we do better? Absolutely. I promised each of you here tonight, as well as everyone in our community, that we will continue to work hard each and every day to give all the parents, the students, the teachers, and administrators until we get it right for our students and community. And I also pledge to you to do what it takes to meet with those teachers that want to have a confidential meeting with me and share their concerns. As a 30-year person that's worked in this school system, I am committed to making sure that we can do everything we can to reach the needs of every child every day. And until every person is happy, and I know that's almost an impossible goal, I promise to commit that to you and to our staff and others to do what we can. And I hope some of you will hang around after this meeting and I'd like to discuss with you and get your names and set up some follow-up meetings. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. In the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on August 14th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Move.
We're moving on, Mr. Henigan, to our agenda items.
You won't let any comments be made at this time?
That's really not what we normally do, and at this time, I think it's not appropriate.
I haven't faced anything like this. And for us to blow over this, I think is wrong. And I know you have a meeting.
We have an update in October.
Why wait? I don't, I frankly think this is important, and we should do this soon.
First of all, to be perfectly in line with parliamentary procedure, it's not on the agenda. We would have to open the agenda.
I'd like to move we open the agenda.
I second it.
We have a motion to open the agenda. We have a second. Mr. Patricic, that takes a unanimous.
The rest.
All right.
An explanation is why that's.
I'd be happy to move that we open the agenda to discuss having an accelerated discussion of the board about the Common Core. I don't want to wait until October. So I would like to open up the agenda to vote that we, as a board, meet in the next two weeks to talk about this, because I think it's serious enough.
All right, we have a motion to open the agenda to add a possible meeting date to discuss Common Core. We have a second. Mr. Patricic, do I need to ask for comments on that? All right. Do you have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public?
I hope that you all vote in favor. I hope that you all each vote in favor of discussing this right now. I understand parliamentary procedure, but my children's education is at stake here, and it is very frustrating when you come up here to speak from your heart, explain what you are suffering every day when your kid comes home with homework, and to just move on to the next agenda like it doesn't matter. So I would vote that you find it in your heart to discuss it for the next few minutes so that we can hear your reaction to everything that these parents have said. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lamar.
I have a question. The purpose for opening the agenda is to establish a time for another meeting? Is that what I understand, Neil? Or is it time to open the board to conversation with?
The motion was to have, hold a discussion of the board and the public on this topic in the next two weeks.
That's establishing another meeting?
That's not.
That is correct. To do that tonight? Is that correct?
We would vote, we can't, well, I don't think we're prepared, frankly, to do it tonight. I don't think the administration is, I would like to schedule something, we have to do public notice, so it can't be, you know, but I think a separate meeting where we come prepared to talk about this, I think is warranted here.
All right, then. My understanding is we're opening the agenda to establish some timeframe for another meeting to be held, and whenever, I don't care. But it's not opening the floor for discussion on that item tonight. Is that right? Okay.
All right, so we have a meeting. We have a motion to open the agenda to establish a meeting to discuss Common Core issues. It will take a unanimous vote to open the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Abstentions? All right, we move on to, it was, it had to be unanimous, Mr. Alfred.
It's unanimous.
It has to be unanimous to open up the agenda.
All right, moving on to the agenda item, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on August 14th, 2014. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Dorman, second by Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item B, approval of the minutes from the public hearing held on August 21st, 2014. Do I have a motion to accept those? Moved by Mr. Bettencourt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to August 14th, 2014. Paula H. Meyer, Florida Avenue Elementary, 23 years, 11 years in St. Tammany Parish. Elizabeth F. Krieger, Slidell High, 37.05 years, 31.05 years in St. Tammany Parish. Mary G. Tribble, Slidell pupil appraisal, 14.15 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion to accept those retirement resolutions?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Sealy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item D, appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to August 14th, 2014. Susan L. Sealy, Educational Center, 38.02 years, 30.14 years in St. Tammany Parish. Brenda L. Archie, Florida Avenue Elementary, 38.19 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Carol A. Roth, Marigny Elementary, 5.10 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Deborah M. Cooper, Transportation Center, 11.98 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Linda A. Marlborough, Transportation Center, 17.56 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Ruth S. Williams, Transportation Center, 27.93 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion to accept the non-certificated retirements?
I move.
Moved by Mr. Bettencourt. Mr. Jeter, would you like to give a second? Second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Comments? Any comments from the public? Mr. Bettencourt, would you like to?
Thank you. I just want to ask Ms. Amy, is there anybody left at Transportation? It seems like over the last several months, we've been having all these people retire. Do we need a smaller building over there for anything, or? So we do retire. Okay. Thank you.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole meeting for human resources and education held on September 4th, 2014. Ms. Mullet.
Thank you. The committee as a whole met for human resources and education on September 4th recommends, our first recommendation, we recommend approval of the revision to the drug-free workplace policy, and I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Mullitt, we have a second by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
The committee recommends approval of the revision to the, handling, sorry, body fluid policy. Just did not look right.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Durman, a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
We also have, we also recommend the approval of the revision to the tobacco-free schools
Moved by Ms. Tipton, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sealy. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Okay, and our last recommendation was, recommends the approval of the revision to the 2014-2015 pupil progression plan, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Mullitt, a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
That is the end of our committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Mullitt. That will bring us to item F, which is approval of the recommendations for the committee as a whole meeting for business affairs administrative held on September 4, 2014. Mr. Durman.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. The committee as a whole meeting held for business affairs has the following recommendations. Recommends the acceptance of the final revised budget for fiscal year 2013-2014.
I have a motion. We have a motion from Mr. Alfred, a second. Mr. Loop, is that you seconding? All right. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Second recommends acceptance of Superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 2014-2015.
Motion by Mr. Alfred, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Third recommends acceptance of Covington High School re-roofing of main building Phase III as substantially complete, subject to architect's recommendations. Submission of all regulatory requirements and approval of Superintendent Fols' STPSB project number 1472, and I so move.
Motion by Mr. Durman, a second by Mr. Loop. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Fourth recommends adoption of a resolution authorizing the advertising for sealed bids for the purchases, purchase of general obligation school bond series 2014 of St. Tammany Parish, wide school district number 12 of the Parish of St. Tammany, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Durman, a second by Mr. Pancks. Do we have any comments from board members? Mr. Schluter is here if we have any questions. Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Ms. Heinz, that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durman. Item G is certification of board members Neil M. Henigan, Elizabeth B. Heinz, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack Loop III, Charles T. Harrell, Rowan V. Tipton, Peggy H. Sealy, Robin P. Mullitt, Ronald Ron Bettencourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, James Ronnie Pancks Sr., John C. Lamarck, and Mary Kay Bellisario in completion of one hour of training for 2014 presented on September 4, 2014 as mandated by Louisiana revised statute 1753. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. I do certify that the above-named board members did indeed complete the training that was offered and presented on September 4, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Fols. That brings us to announcements. We would like to thank the students at Fountain Blue Junior High School for the beautiful artwork on display this month in the atrium. They are the students of art teacher Ms. Adair Watkins. We'd also like to thank the chorus students from Madisonville Junior High School for their lovely performance at the reception before tonight's meeting. Their choir director is Ms. Becky McLean. A special board meeting will be held on Thursday, September 18 at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of expulsion hearings. We have items listed on the agenda for executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Sealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Durman. We are now in executive session.